You're all being way too quiet.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Cecilia.
Happy New Year. Hello, Ms. Conneke.
Hello, Chair. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Are you ready? We are recording. Okay, I call this meeting to order. Mr. Zarzaki, can please call roll.
All right, Ms. Chick.
Here. Northfield Township, Michigan, Janet Chick.
Mr. Kuzno's position has expired. Mr. Dwyer?
Present, Northfield Township, Michigan.
Mr. Quinto appears to be absent.
He's absent with notice.
With notice. Ms. Infante?
Present, Northfield Township.
Mr. Roman?
Here, Northfield Township.
And Zarzaki, present, Northfield Township.
Thank you. Make a motion. We adopt the agenda.
Second.
Support by Ms. Infante. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Go to the call to the public. Ms. Conneke.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, we'll have a call to the public for any public comment on agenda items. If you wish to comment at this time, please use the raise hand function. You can find that at the bottom of your screen. Or if you've called in, you can use star six and wait to be acknowledged to give your comment. If I acknowledge you, please state your name and address before offering your comments. Is there any member of the public present who wishes to address the planning commission at this time? Chair, do you not see anyone wishing to be acknowledged for public comment?
Thank you. In that case, there's no clarifications from commissioners. No correspondence that I know of, no public hearings tonight. Item eight is reports of committees. Board of trustees report. Ms. Chick?
The board held a special meeting on December 17th. The board received a presentation from our auditors, Pfeffer, Hannaford, and Polka. The results of the audit is that the previous board has done a great job handling their fiduciary duties of ensuring the township remains in good and safe financial state. We were commended on the status of our general fund balance and conservative position on spending, resulting at the time of the audit, a general fund balance of 160%. There were a couple administrative items the township could improve on, but these were not unusual for a township of our size and the number of office staff. That's all I have.
Thank you. There's no ZBA report in the absence of Mr. Kuzno. Staff report, Ms. Byrd.
Sorry, I got muted somehow. I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning consultant report, Ms. Conneke.
Sure. I just want to give an update on the Parks and Recreation Plan. I received a little bit more information from my colleague Natalie Bond, who is spearheading this process, about how she would like the planning commission involved. So, this is kind of a PSA to the public as well, that the plan has been posted for public comment. We are in the 30-day required public comment period. So, we invite the planning commission to go to the township website. It's under the Parks and Recreation Board page, document center, to find the draft. And you may submit comments directly to Natalie or members of the board, and we will make sure to incorporate those. However, because of the tight timeframe we're on to get the plan adopted, that's going to be the best way for planning commission to comment at this time. Just to note, it is not required that the planning commission publicly review, give comment, and recommend the plan for adoption. However, Natalie is happy to come give a presentation to the planning commission at the next meeting, if you are open to that. And at that time, you can either choose to just kind of receive and file, or recommend that the board adopt the plan.
Thank you. Ms. Chick, have a question?
Yeah, I noticed, but that is on our work plan. So, are we expected to do something with the Parks and Rec Master Plan?
So, I think it's a little bit confusing how we posed it last year. It's just part of the planning commission's work plan. It's really more like how we did it this year. It's under the purview of the Planning and Zoning Department. We were leading that effort, but there's no statutory requirement for the planning commission to do a formal review. However, they would like to present it in some way to the planning commission. So, it's really your call, how you would like to address.
Okay. I also noticed, because I did look at the draft that's available to the public online, there's a lot of missing information. It doesn't look complete. So, I'm wondering how the public can comment on stuff that's not there.
Okay. I think my colleague Natalie would be better opposed to answer kind of specific questions. Or Paul Lippens as well. I know he has been in contact with other board members with kind of similar comments and has been working to fill in those gaps, so that by the time that it's ready for adoption, that all of that stuff is there. I know he mentioned to me adding a lot more information, bringing it into align with the other plans that the township has recently adopted in North Village, in particular.
Okay, and you want that Parks and Rec Master Plan should be done by the end of January? Is that when you're expecting final approval?
I believe February 1st is the deadline. That is set by the state. They moved up the deadline a month this year. So, it's usually in March. It is in February this year for some reason.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Conneke, so I'm not opposed to having a presentation by Ms. Bond, but again, you said that we're not required to give a recommendation on this item. Do you think she could do a presentation 10 minutes and less? Is that something like that we're looking?
I can give her those parameters.
Okay. For one, I'd be interested to hear, although I haven't looked it up online yet, but I don't know if the other commissioners would like to hear also next meeting. I see your head shaking.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, if you'd like to plan on it, Ms. Conneke, that'd be fine.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you. There's no Parks and Recreation report due to Mr. Iquino's absence, and we have downtown planning group report, Ms. Infante.
So, we had a meeting at the same time as the DDA, so I'm sort of reporting from talking with people and from the minutes. And a lot of the items corresponded with what's on our agenda. The major issues involve TIF capture and trying to exactly identify the lines of DDA properties and, you know, how they can capture any funding through sort of clarity on that particular item. That's been an issue, in fact, that they've been discussing since I joined their meetings. The other issue was the development of orientation packet, and this is the phase one of becoming redevelopment-ready. It's one of the first steps you need to take, and they're doing that. I do know that the new supervisor is very involved in this also. And then the final, a lot of discussion about the status of the North Village and confusion about, again, where that is incorporated into the DDA, some confusion about when, what exactly the park and the DDA and then this new supposed Livonia planners' plans, what the status of all of this is. So, there was confusion, but there was also a lot of excitement about it.
Thank you. Ms. Conneke, would you like to address any of the items Ms. Infante brought up, or no?
I think it's necessary right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go to unfinished business. Item nine, A is the revised 2020 annual report and 2021 work plan. Ms. Conneke.
Thank you, Chair. So, I incorporated all of the edits we discussed at our last meeting. I think that there's a lot more clarity now in what each of those work items is anticipated to be. And then I also received a request to add estimated costs for each of the items in the work plan, which will help the township board determine which of these items are within the allocated planning budget and which are not, and also help authorize cost projects. So, I think that's it for me on this, and we can open it up for any other discussions or comments.
Thank you. I'll make motion that we forward this revision to the Board of Trustees. Is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Ms. Chick. Any questions, comments regarding the revisions that we received since the last meeting?
I just want to thank Ms. Conneke for adding the estimates on it. That's very helpful. It'll be very helpful to the board to make a quick decision.
Great.
Anyone else? Mr. Dwyer?
So, just to clarify, the estimated cost is the cost for McKenna?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. So, something like the North Village Park Master Plan, for instance, you're probably hiring a landscape architect for that scope of work. The condemnation and demolition probably can be done by the zoning administrator, building official, and someone else.
Okay, thank you.
That it? Okay, we have a motion to forward this to the Board of Trustees. We'll do roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki?
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes, and Mr. Quinto is absent with notice.
Thank you. Passes. Item B is discussion of code enforcement zoning ordinance text amendment. Ms. Conneke.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so we discussed this at our last meeting. We have been asked to bring this amendment forward again. As you recall, this was last in front of the planning commission in 2018. This is largely the language that was previously brought to you. I thought for sake of clarity, to just bring it back mostly as it was, so we can poke holes in it and talk about what else is missing, where areas of clarification are needed, and all get on the same page content-wise. It's kind of our main goal here tonight. So, that's why we presented it in a memo format with strikes throughs. Once it is ready for public hearing, it will be in a proper ordinance resolution format. I do just want to preface that. So, the main things that we are trying to address with this ordinance, this was an issue raised by, you know, various people within the township, including our zoning administrator, who said, you know, "I don't really have the power to write tickets. It's not really my job to do so. This really falls under the rules and responsibilities of a code enforcement officer, and we need to write in rules and responsibilities for that officer and then clearly identify what those responsibilities are." So, the ordinance previously stated that it's a bit unclear. But first, notice of violation is just a written notice of violation, and then it would go straight to a misdemeanor, essentially, if the issue wasn't corrected. We have made, we have proposed a change here that failure to bring the property into compliance after that first notice of violation is a civil infraction, and it can be elevated to a misdemeanor unless, it's a really egregious issue, you could go straight to a civil infraction. So, that's the intent of the ordinance language in front of you, and I'm happy to kind of work through your comments and questions and improve on this section as a whole.
Thank you, Ms. Conneke. I'm in favor of, you know, adjusting the ordinance as the administration sees fit, so that it's designed for how we actually have personnel to take care of it. So, if the other commissioners can keep that in mind. I do have, I have several comments just to, and their function issues relative to the zoning ordinance, but I'll ask if any other commissioners have comments or questions regarding what we have so far. Mr. Dwyer?
How do we deal with blight? If I walk my dog a mile and a half, I will pass three properties with five acres, and each of them has got 10 cars, one dozer, two excavators, five minivans. None of them are moved in 10 years, and they're all in some degree of undergrowth. I guess that's the beauty of having two and a half to five acres, is there's plenty of place to hide stuff to one degree or another. But if I'm living next door, that is definitely a devaluation on my property, and it absolutely is an eyesore for everyone walking past it. And we have, if there's three within a mile and a half of my house, I'm guessing there's dozens all over this township. And for the four years I've been here, nothing's changed. I'm not sure, one, how do we define blight? Is there, you know, an ordinance about the blight? Is there any teeth about blight? It seems to be one of the things that falls through the, you know, the code here consistently.
I see Ms. Chick's hand up, but Ms. Conneke, would you like to touch upon that question first?
Yeah, I can do it kind of generally, because I haven't dug too far into the township's specific codes regarding things like bright, blight, and dangerous buildings. But generally speaking, you have sections within your general code of ordinance. Big disclaimer that I should have put out front here. This is purely about code enforcement of zoning ordinance violations. So, if the zoning ordinance prohibits people to store vehicles on their property, the zoning, the code enforcement officer can issue a notice of violation and eventually a ticket for that. If we are going into blights, your blight ordinance, your dangerous building ordinance, et cetera, is what kicks in, and your general code of ordinance is what will govern through your code enforcement officer, through your building official. That's part of the reason that demolition and condemnation program is another part of the recommended work plan, is because it deals more with that side of the zoning ordinance or of the code ordinances and those types of issues, where this is just trying to solve a very specific pain point for the zoning administrator and staff with regards to zoning ordinance violations.
So, to be clear though, Ms. Conneke, even though the blight may be in another part of the ordinance, this administration and enforcement article is indeed the power for the code enforcement officer to make, get corrections done via warnings and tickets. Am I clear and, am I correct and clear on that?
I have not been interpreting it that way, because this article sits within the zoning ordinance chapter and only within the zoning ordinance chapter. I think if we want to make that clearer, that the same sorts of authorities apply for general code violations, we need to look at the general code and near the language. I will need, I would need to do some more research, though, on that.
Thank you for, I'm glad I asked that, because I think that would be relevant. I mean, I don't know, and I understand what you're saying. This is the zoning ordinance section. I don't know if this same violation of penalties and the actions that the township can take are contained in any other part of the ordinance, but it may be something I think it'd be worth asking the township as to which way they would like to go on that, or if this would address that. We could probably include, like, again, I'm guessing, we may be able to include other things under the violation penalties, under the enforcement part, but I'm not sure. I also see Ms. Chick with a hand up.
Yeah, we did have a blight ordinance, and as you are saying, I'm not sure that there's anything in our blight ordinance that mirrors this or is even close to it. But to Mr. Amen's comment, that's probably been the biggest issue in the township since I've been here, and I've been here 20 years now, is it's not that we don't have an ordinance or it's not that we, and complaints are made. They don't act on, they don't drive around and look for issues. Someone has to make a complaint. So, someone makes a complaint, and then the ordinance officer goes out there and takes a look. The only power he has is to issue warnings. We can't, we don't do tickets or citations yet, and that's what we're trying to do with this. And so, people know that. So, you know, they probably just rip up whatever they're getting and know that nothing's going to happen, but it should be addressed. And if it can't be addressed in the zoning ordinance, then it should be addressed in general ordinance as well. So, I'm glad that we're working on this, because people have been asking for it for a long time. But we need teeth, and we haven't had it.
Thank you, Ms. Infante.
This is such an important issue, and like Janet, I've been here for over 20 years, and enforcement has been a major problem in my experience. And where I live, there's a culture that uses the language of grandfather clause. And I think there's a real confusion about what is allowed, because I've been here for 50 years. And I don't know, where does a code enforcement officer start explaining the grandfather clauses? Don't cover X, Y, or Z. And I know that we've had to have the police involved here between neighbors, because there's a real confusion about what one can do and how visible is it from the road to be able to get the code enforcement officer involved? It's very complex. And so, I guess my concern is perhaps less technical. We do need teeth in this, but that there's a cultural issue that somehow has to be addressed, particularly around the assumption that I'm covered by a grandfather clause, because I've been doing this for 50 or 60 years, so the law just changed, but I assume. So, that's just my experience, and I think this is an incredibly important issue.
Thank you. Ms. Conneke, do you have any response to that, or no?
No, I think that all makes sense, and that's really where having this part of the zoning ordinance is meant to assist the township. So, if someone is non-conforming and they've been told they're non-conforming, and they're being told they can't grandfather, you know, this is clearly spelling out how the township can go about handling this. But I am glad we brought this up, because the more I began to dig into this myself, the more I started to think about what else is in the code of ordinances generally that helps the township do this. So, I think this is a big question that we need to look into as we move forward with these amendments as well.
Right, and although I haven't looked it up, I mean, the blight, or whatever they have for blight certainly could be rolled into this if necessary. Could be, that's mostly, having done, I actually had done ordinance enforcement work for a city when I worked. And the biggest thing is the blight ordinance that you use. What we're addressing here seems to, it pertains to, like, again, as Ms. Conneke said, the zoning end of it. So, that's what we're going to kind of stick with and let Ms. Conneke do some more research and find out about the blight part. Does anyone else have comments before I get into mine?
Yeah, I just have one regarding this that we're provided from Ms. Conneke. I'm noticing when you were talking about they issue a warning letter, and then at some point, they could issue a citation or a ticket, there's no timeframe. Are we establishing timeframes, like 30 days to comply, 60 days to comply, 90 days to comply? Is that within our purview, or how is that going to be handled?
I think we could absolutely, oh, Chair, please. I'm sure you know better than I.
It's very dependent on the situation. That's why I think we should stay general and leave the, and I do have some wordage to arrange on this proposal, but you're correct, I think. But if we stay general, because you may need more time on certain issues than others, so it gives the ordinance person that's doing the enforcement some flexibility. So, I think we could keep it generalized. Does that help, Ms. Chick?
That's an answer. Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer?
Just along those lines, who will determine the timeframe for coming into compliance and the amount of fines and the, some sort of schedule as to how that would work in terms of amount and time? Who's going to decide that?
That's a good question. Typically, it's, you know, you want to have a consistent enforcement time arrangement, but that's not always the case. And as I said, some places you have to deal with more than one violation or do multiple violations on one offense. So, it really comes down to an administrative issue, really should be up to the, we're given the authority in this document to the zoning administrator, so that it would be a decision of theirs, I would feel, and between them and the ordinance enforcement officer. But correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Conneke.
Yes, I think we want that responsibility to primarily fall to the code enforcement officer, probably working with the building official, if that's not the same entity. Typically, the building official will communicate the timeframe for compliance, in my experience.
It is a good point, though, Ms. Conneke, for consistency, so that in people comparison, comparing violations to each other, it'd be good for the township to have a consistent timeframe. But is there anyone else? Mr. Zarzaki?
Yes, if I'm not mistaken, there are some, under the last section here, E, where we have stop work order, there are some limitations set by the state under the construction laws as to how long stop work orders are good for and how fast they have to be complied with. That might be an area that you want to look into. I believe it's under LARA, they call it. The Licensing Bureau has a section in there about what is the allowable time limit for a stop work order and how soon it has to be corrected. That's the only where, only place I remember in the state codes that actually has a time limit for some of this stuff.
That's correct, Mr. Zarzaki. And it's like, I had a note on that one, that it's also a building code enforcement, enforceable by the building official or the inspector. So, I do have a comment on that, which being E, on the second page. Perhaps we can jump back on there if you like, Mr. Zarzaki, when we get there.
Okay.
So, I'll start with, and I went, I mean, when I review something, I just go from top to bottom, and then, so I'll obviously start at the top of the document. It'd be new item C. Actually, let's back up. New item A. Now, this zoning administrator, perhaps, Ms. Conneke, we could have, or their designee shall administer and enforce. If not, if you want to have just the administering part under the zoning administrator, you could also, you could say the zoning administrator shall administer and the zoning administrator or their designee may enforce all provisions of this chapter. And it's kind of-
I think that works.
I'm sorry?
That makes sense to me. It might be helpful as we go through these to have the zoning administrator, once again, take a look before this comes back to you, just to make sure that that makes sense to her and to how things are currently running on the staff side.
Okay, so then, that also reflects in C, being the zoning administrator, or their designee shall make it all inspections required by this chapter. But we don't want to limit it just to the zoning administrator, I don't think. And then the only issue I had in C, other than that, was at the very end. Subject to approval by the township board. It may want to have approval by the township manager in our case. It seems kind of cumbersome that the zoning administrator or the code enforcement officer would have to go all the way to get board approvals.
Right, because that's administrative, and that's who the manager would be handling.
Okay, so you agree with that, Ms. Chick? Okay, so we could change board to manager, Ms. Conneke. And D, I think it'd be better to say zoning administrator shall direct the code enforcement officer, not work with. And E, And E, I have, uh, I don't have anything for that one. And F, I have, uh, the zoning administrator shall submit to the, uh, board of trustees, board of trustees and the planning commission according to a report. Um, I get a little, I get, uh, obsessed, I guess, with, I'd like to have the positions like zoning administrator capitalized, code enforcement officer capitalized, fire chief, building inspector, um, and so on. If we could do this, certificates of zoning compliance, that's its own entity, so caps there, so on.
Sure.
Proving that you need to do, but just.
So just to comment on the capitalization, because I don't like it either. Um, this is how the capitalization is done throughout the ordinance. So generally speaking, um, I try to just stay consistent with what you already have. We can capitalize it, but this section will be different from the rest of the ordinance. That's the only reason it's not. But something, um, like this certificate of occupancy, things like that should be capitalized, I agree.
It will, after we do the zoning ordinance review.
I like it. I like setting the standard with this one.
That's my suggestion, okay.
All right, and then township board is the phrase used throughout the ordinance, so.
It's usually board of trustees, but if, if, I guess if it works, right?
It's up to the planning commission. I mean, either is an acceptable standard. I would just want us to be consistent from this.
Yeah, as an entity, we're the board of trustees.
Yep.
Okay, there we have it, right from the board.
You can always do a global change for things and it's super easy, like definitely planning commission.
So, um, and before I get into the next portion of violations and penalties, Ms. Conneke, can you tell us the difference between a civil infraction and a misdemeanor?
Um, that's not really my specialty, but, um, civil infraction is below a misdemeanor in terms of severity of penalty.
I, I assume that, but of course, um, this is probably gonna get reviewed by the township attorney again. But I think it'd be good to, um, have us have a good understanding what it is between the differences. I know, um, again, I wanna keep going back to my past, but uh, code enforcement, if we would use typically, you know, it's a, it's a, um, person that does the enforcement as a, the officer of the court. And of course, if you had to write warnings and it led to a ticket, it was a misdemeanor in the local, the local court. So I'm, I'm confused as to the civil infraction part. Um, so perhaps you can get clarification when we revisit this.
Absolutely. I believe the diff, the differences in the severity of penalty. Um, I believe it's a difference between, you know, ticket, fine, court appearance and potential penalty of jail time, but I would have to confirm that.
Okay, and yeah, there's usually a, 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 a limit on the fine, like five, up to five hundred dollars and thirty days um, jail, but I, I mean, that's, that needs to be answered by the attorney. But, um, while I ask that, I had, we, we were coming up with a lot of, um, terms being like notice of violation, civil infraction, misdemeanor. We have the stop work order, public nuisance per se. All those are new terms in this. Well, not, maybe not new terms, but terms that should be, uh, defined, I believe. So perhaps we can throw in definitions if these aren't addressed in our zoning definitions.
Yep, I will do a review of the zoning definitions and, um, we can fold in an update to that section for any undefined terms.
Okay. So we go to, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Zarzaki, shout out if I don't see you. I'm not always looking at the screen.
If we're going to do definitions, they should be definitions that comply with the state building code. Then they do have definitions for violations and stop work orders and stuff. And it's always fun to go through a book that's about two and a half inches thick.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, so then I'll start in with A, if no one has any other questions on that. Seeing none, okay. Um, so A, um, I think, okay, so it's about the notice of violation that the direction zoning administrator, code enforcement officers, uh, shall serve a notice of violation. It says or, or order. I think we should stick with just notice of violation and define that, get rid of or order. And at the end of A, um, this touches upon the time limit. I think, um, we get into the, um, last, this, okay, the second to last line of that paragraph of A should be like a period under issued here under period. Such notice of violation shall direct the discontinuance of illegal action or condition and the abatement of the violation within a specified time or within the specified time. Probably would help. So then that would take us to B, if the notice of violation is not complied with it, uh, with not say scratch with, uh, with promptly and put within the specified time, the code enforcement officers hereby authorized to issue, so on.
Yep.
Um, later in that paragraph, code enforcement officer may write a civil infr, issue, issue a civil infraction citation. Do you see where that's at, Ms. Conneke?
Mm-hmm, I'm following along.
Okay. Anyone acting on, on behalf, not in behalf of the person, persons, firm, or corporation responsible for a civil infraction.
Shall be subject, yeah, not, and shall be.
Yes, scratch and, I think. They shall be subject to a fine. And later in that same one, uh, the timely manner, it's down below, it says issuance of the civil infraction citation. The violation is still not corrected in a timely manner, should be, uh, in, in the specified time as required by the code enforcement officer. Uh, the violation still, uh, can be upgraded to a misdemeanor. And the, the last sentence of B seems to be like a whole cut and paste of an attorney's long, long sentence. And I, I think if you would like to look at it and make it more, uh, easier for a layman to, uh, navigate, uh, have at it, I, that's a suggestion of mine. I mean, it's okay the way it is, but it just seems lengthy.
Yeah, absolutely. You'll notice we tried to, I, I think when this was put together, the thought was to do it, you know, expeditiously and not rip the whole section apart, but since we're taking a close look, yeah, why don't we just clean as much up as we can?
Thank you, I agree. And then in C, so again, in a time, at the very end of C, uh, in a timely manner, in the specified time again. And that gives us consistency throughout in all those paragraphs. So then, uh, takes us to the second page. D is okay, I got E, that stop work order, probably all caps. Um, and one of our new definitions, hopefully. Uh, so it'd be upon notice from this code enforcement officer or building official. I think it should include that because, like I said, uh, earlier with Mr. Zarzaki, that the stop work order is handled through the, also handled through the, the building code. So in the middle of that paragraph, the stop work order shall be in writing and, and shall be given, should be forwarded, probably is a better word, to the owner of the property involved or to the owner's agent or to the person doing the work and shall state the conditions under which the work may be resumed. Any person who shall continue any work in or about the structure or premises after the posting of a stop work order, because being served, uh, so in other words, if, um, the ordinance officer puts it, or building official puts a stop work order posted on a building because no one's there, it's posted, so it's still valid. It doesn't mean that you had served it technically. Although when that person, you know, when the ordinance officer inspector goes back to the office, it is part of the, um, I know it's part of the building code that that be sent, the stop work order be sent to the person in charge or responsible for the job. Uh, Mr. Zarzaki?
The term served is the actual, is actually the term used in the state building codes.
Okay.
Where, where, any person who shall continue any work in or about the structure after having been served with a stop work order.
So perhaps we can keep served and also include the, and posted? Having been served and posted a stop work order? How about that? That resolves it.
Yeah, but I'm just, I don't want to be in conflict with what the state is saying.
No, I agree. I'm glad you caught that. And the last part, um, this, uh, the zoning administration, zoning administrator to perform, excuse me, let's back up. Um, okay, so having been served or posted a stop work order, except such work as such person is directed by the zoning administrator. Or their designee should be added to perform, to remove a violation or unsafe condition, shall be made, shall be liable for a daily fine of not less than one hundred dollars per day. And, and I'm not sure, you know, um, try to tend not to have a set dollar amount, but it's, it's, it's not less than, so it's a minimum. So it can always be more than that. I, I'm not familiar with what, you know, the common standard is now. Um, other municipalities or townships might be using, but it seems, I wouldn't, I, I would at least want a hundred dollars per day, but it can be more. So that's up, you know, if you wanna leave it at a hundred, that's fine, or you could put established by the town, a, a fine established by the township. Uh, your choice, I guess. You have any comment on it, Ms. Conneke?
No, I think it would be helpful, uh, to run this by the zoning administrator and building official um, and, and see what they recommend, this, this wording look like.
Okay, that'd be great. And then the last one, public nuisance, nuisance per se, um, hopefully we get a definition for that. And, um, that's just a long, lengthy sentence, but maybe missing a comma in there somewhere, but perhaps you can prove it. That's all I have, um, on all the items. And then, as I, as I mentioned, the caps and the, uh, reworking, I'm sure you'll take care of all that for our next edition. Any other commissioners have comment, questions, additions? Uh, see a couple hands. Ms. Infante?
This might not be the place to talk about this, but I have a quick question about process because let's say someone has issues with fencing and bulldozing and is making complaints about these violations of zoning ordinances. And the code enforcement officer goes to the property and the property owner won't, won't, won't let them on the property to see, and you can't see from the front of the property. What right does that code enforcement officer have to, to follow up on this complaint? In other words, is there an automatic step that they receive support from law enforcement? I'm, I'm just curious about the process because I'll tell you what, a code enforcement officer, that's a job I would not wanna have in this township.
I don't know, Ms. Infante, how it's handled currently. I know I've had to have police backup, I've had to have, um, a court order to inspect the property. Um, I've also, if you're able to see it from a public view, that's another option. So I mean, there's, there's multiple options, but I don't know, first, you know, I don't know exactly what our township is using. Um, Ms. Chick?
I know, I don't know if it's, if it's legal or not. I'm just gonna say that I know when people have made complaints in the past that if something can't be seen from the street and the owner won't let the person on the property, that the complainant or whoever can see it has given photographs so that it's visible.
That's what's happened in situations like this, but I just didn't know if there was a, a process or the code enforcement officer just has to follow through on common sense.
I, I can't answer that. I don't know. Mr. Zarzaki?
The state building code does have a right of entry. States in the discharge of duties, the code official may enter any building, structure, or premise in the jurisdiction to enforce the provisions of the act and the codes. That's part of the state building codes.
But that also applies to the building official, so.
It's for the building official, doesn't say the code enforcement officer.
Correct. So in our case, if the, um, code enforcement officer was under the jurisdiction or the administrative part of the building official, then that could apply, but ours.
Your representative.
Administration of the zoning administrator, so, but I agree with you on that. Mr. Dwyer, you had your hand up.
A modern day code enforcement officer should have and be able to operate a drone.
I'm sorry?
A modern day code enforcement officer should have and be able to operate a drone.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Not expensive, if he's gonna be efficient in, uh, monitoring all this acreage on this township, he should have a drone.
I'll put it in the budget.
They're not that expensive and it would save, save a whole lot of time and making them very efficient.
That's right.
Every real estate agent has one.
Yeah.
Every realtor has a drone. Why wouldn't a code enforcement officer not have one?
That's a great idea.
Anyone else have any other additions or notes for Ms. Conneke on this subject? I don't think we have any, so I think it's a good.
Start, oh.
Well, I think it's a good finish. We should have it done, a done document, I think, next time. I, or close to it.
Yeah.
Ms. Chick?
Yeah, um, in your memo, it said that this was reviewed by the attorney. Was, was it reviewed with the changes that were made or was it initially reviewed by the attorney? Or, and now we're gonna have it reviewed again because it costs money every time you review it, so.
So I got a little more back, this, this was last reviewed by the township's previous attorney.
Okay.
I have had the wrong information on that. So I think it's advisable, especially with something like this, especially because we're looking at state law and building code compliance. But the building official and the township attorney should look at it. But I defer to the planning commission's judgment about what you would want us to do.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that because it was the previous township attorney's, um, idea of the, um, prior to a misdemeanor would be a civil infraction language. And perhaps Mr. Fink, uh, doesn't have that same view. So I would, I would leave it to you to find out from them which they would prefer before we get this, this zoning ordinance, um, change made. So perhaps you can find that out for us, Ms. Conneke.
And I will tell you that when it gets to the board level, someone on the board will ask if it's been reviewed by the attorney. So best to have that done prior.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I think we can move on.
Uh, Chair, before we move on, I just wanna be absolutely clear on what the planning commission wants your next step. on what the planning commission wants your next steps to be, so would you like to see another draft of this come back prior to setting a public hearing, or go right to public hearing?
I, I know it's a high priority, but unfortunately, I'd, I'd like to see another draft that's finalized. I, and I don't know if my, my fellow commissioners agree or not.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay.
Assuming that includes the attorney review.
Right.
Yes, yeah, that, and hopefully it could be by our next meeting. I, I don't, I won't hold you to that, I mean, obviously there might be some time issues, but I know we're, they're, they're trying to get this as quickly as possible. At this point, it became a priority, so, okay. Does that help, Ms. Conneke?
That's it, as we have clear direction moving forward.
Thank you. Um, so new business is the adopt Roberts Rules of Order, everyone received that in a packet, I'll make a motion that the planning commission adopt the Roberts Rules of Order simplified, and this is due, this is, I'll start with that. Make a motion to adopt the Roberts Rules of Order simplified, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Zarzaki, questions, comments on that motion? Basically, it fulfills our, uh, bylaws, do we, every year we accept, we adopt the Roberts Rules of Order simplified. So, any other questions on that? Seeing none, we'll do, uh, I think we can do just a, um, and we don't have to do a, a roll call vote for that, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye, savit, thank you. Uh, next item is approval proceeding minutes from December 16th, I make a motion, we approve those minutes and dispense with reading.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Chick, any questions, comments or corrections on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed. A final call to the public, Ms. Conneke, I'll go to you.
Thank you, Chair, at this time, we will have our final call to the public for items both on and off the agenda. Um, for those who may have joined in late, if you wish to address the planning commission at this time, please use the raise hand function or dial star six if you're on your phone, and wait to be acknowledged. Uh, once I acknowledge you, uh, please state your name and address before, uh, giving your comments. Is there any member of the public present, uh, at this time, who wishes to address the planning commission? Okay, Chair, it looks like we have no members of the public wishing to comment.
Thank you, um, comments from commissioners, we'll begin with Ms. Chick.
Um, actually, uh, I'm noticing under the question and answer at the bottom of our screen, Ms. Limbaugh answers the questions about infractions and misdemeanors, do you want to hear it?
Uh, sure.
Okay, she says, um, uh, infractions are minor civil violations, misdemeanors are more serious than infractions, and felonies are the most serious criminal offenses. Um, when someone is charged with a civil infraction, the court declares the person either responsible or not responsible, there is no guilt or innocence attached to a civil infraction. Misdemeanors, if the punishment does not include the possibility of state prison time, it is a misdemeanor. Misdemeanors are more common criminal offenses, so it is a level of severity. So, that's all I have, it was a good meeting, thank you.
Ms. Infante?
I don't know if this is something that Ms. Chick would want to pursue, but the idea of supporting our code enforcement officers by purchasing a drone, if we could get the FAA clearance, is something I would really like to pursue, um, I do think the issue of taking pictures literally endangers, endangers residents.
It does, it does.
It, it does, and it, it should not be an issue that a resident has to take up in that way, and I think the code enforcement officers, again, I'm sure there are FAA regulations, more likely there are Fourth Amendment regulations or, or, um, considerations. But I think it's a great idea, and so I would, I would like to pursue that if it's something that I just need to do, or if it's something, Janet, that you can bring up with the board.
I'll bring it to the board, and then they can decide whether or not it's something they want to pursue.
Great, because that code enforcement officer needs teeth too.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Mr. Zarzaki?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, and I guess I'll add a comment, that I, I'd like to have the ordinance officer have his own township vehicle, and I, that's, I'm sure that's been touched upon.
It has.
He wants that before he gets a drone, I'm sure.
For sure.
And of course, communication equ, I don't know if he has contact with the local PD, I don't know.
I'm sure he does, I just, I don't know how it's done.
I know it came up in conversation prior, um, it was some time ago with the board, but, um, having done the job, uh, you definitely want both of those things. So, I, and I'm, I'm all for helping that person do, get all the tools they need to do the job, because it's the most difficult job to start with, so.
Absolutely.
But that's all I have, um, so I make, oh, okay, I'll announce the next regular meeting is January 20th, and make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Chick, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye, savit, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Bye, everyone, good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Okay, Mary, the recording has been stopped, it should be saved for you.